All right, it's turn seven o'clock, the time's arrived, so I'm gonna open the meeting, welcome everyone to the Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals Meeting for Wednesday, January eighth. I'll remind everybody that the meeting's being recorded, it will be available for replay on the town's website within a few days. Gonna start by taking attendance, Dave Hatfield.
Here.
Chip Tarbell.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Yeah.
Mickey Feely.
Here.
Kasumi Humphries.
Yeah.
Greg Demersian.
Here.
And Kirsten Brown.
Here.
Uh, there are no new hearings, so Joe, you get the night off from reading the legal notice.
Thank you.
Which brings us right to our, our main agenda. First up though, as is our custom, we've had a letter submitted for continuance on one of the matters that was on tonight's agenda. I have a letter in front of me from Attorney Brian McGrail with today's date. Regarding L and L Development LLC in Wakefield Salem Street LLC, one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street, case numbers twenty-five, twenty-one, and twenty-five, twenty-two. Please continue this matter until your meeting on January twenty-second. They're still working on items requested by the board.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the hearing at one fifty-four to one fifty-eight Salem Street to our meeting on January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Then a motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing seeing non-regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes, matters continue. All right, on to continued hearings, first one up. Case twenty-four, ten, the residents at Nahant Street LLC. Uh, this is one of the comprehensive permit applications on the Haunt Street, uh, chapter forty-B. Uh, reminder that the hearing's been closed, so for folks here, the board, this will be a discussion amongst the board, we're gonna deliberate on this matter and potentially adjudicate the case. We will not be accepting any, uh, further testimony from the applicant, from any of the town departments, nor members of the public. This is strictly a discussion amongst the board members regarding this case. So with that, I think the best way, there are a number of waivers here. We've heard this matter for, um, over a year now. I think the way I'd like to go through it is to have a general discussion about people's feelings about the application in general. From there, there are several waivers, we need to work our way through each waiver, and we need to not only discuss each waiver, we need to take a roll call vote on each waiver. That might be a bit tedious, but we gotta do it. After that, we're gonna take a vote on the totality of the comprehensive permit application at the end of discussion of all the waivers. So, I wanna clarify some things, though, in my mind, um, as we look at this application, you know, it was a long road for a year. Over the last several weeks prior to closing the public hearing, there was some discussion that we had with the applicant about shrinking the project from a hundred units to eighty units. However, at the end of the day, the applicant did not provide information necessary that I believe the applicant himself, uh, and his development team knows that is necessary to approve a project of that scale. So it was never reviewed by TAC, it was never reviewed by town, uh, departments, and other subject matter experts at the town. So we'll never know about that eighty unit, how that might've come out in the wash from all that process. So for me, we're really looking at the original application of a hundred units. So, the other thing, um, all right, uh, I'll, I'll save that other comment for later, but, uh, just general comments if folks have them, about, you know, the process, the application, uh, and the, um, and the overall, uh, vote that we'll need to take in the end about the, uh, the comprehensive permit.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to start with my thoughts and comments.
Okay.
Um, so certainly the project, uh, has been discussed a long time, and I just wanna take a little bit of a step back and go back to the original meeting that the applicant had with not our board, but with town council, and the comments that came from there, and, and a number of the comments from town council was that it was too large, uh, didn't fit into the neighborhood. The Haunt Street was a street that, that they didn't think should have a project this size on it. And then it came to us, and we started with some of those similar comments, and, and when I say too large, too large can, can be seen in many different ways. We call it too dense at times, we call it too massive at times, we call it too many units at times. Um, those are all the same thing, right? Whether somebody says it's too dense, in my mind, if somebody says it's too dense, well, that means it's too big, it, it's too large. So, we, we then started in our process talking a, about the project, and, and we brought up those subjects that were brought up at town council, and, and the applicant didn't want to discuss density, size, whatever, until TAC had met and come back for review. Well, that became almost impossible, because as you're supposed to do in a, in a forty-B application, is your traffic study is supposed to be done and presented right off the bat. Um, and we didn't have a traffic study for months and months. So every time we brought up the subject of density or fitting into the neighborhood or size, it was always shunned off until the traffic study came back, and until we had a review of the traffic study with, with, with our town, uh, experts, right? And TAC, we view as, as a town, uh, our, our town experts, they're our, our review. We didn't get an outside review because we have a review done by Traffic Advisory and, and TAC. So, we then for months kind of beat it around the bush, and, and we went back and forth, and, and we even set up a working group to be able to try to expedite the discussion. And it, it failed, right? I, I've now been on the board for twenty-four years, I've been involved before forty-B was created. Um, I've sat through and voted on every forty-B application that we've had, and, um, this process was just flawed from the beginning. The discussions weren't, uh, that they weren't, I'll use the word positive, they were, they were certainly friendly, but, but we didn't get anywhere, because we kept, the elephant in the room never got discussed until way too late into the process. So I feel the process as a whole was flawed by the applicant's unwillingness to discuss size. Um, you know, we, we played a little bit with colors, and we played a little bit with how it might fit into the neighborhood, but it was always, it never fit into the neighborhood. A hundred units never, uh, fit comfortably into the Nahant Street neighborhood. Um, and, you know, we heard from neighbors every single meeting, uh, about their feelings and, and about their neighborhood and, and the way Wakefield is a town that, that can't handle a, a project like this. So we did set up the working group, in that working group, we really didn't accomplish a whole lot, because we still were always waiting for the Traffic Advisory Committee. Uh, once we got the Traffic Advisory Committee, it came back as one of the worst results that I've ever seen, uh, whether it's a forty-B or a straight project, uh, to this board, that it was unsafe, right? What does unsafe mean? Sight lines, amount of time cars coming around the corner to see each other, um, getting in and out of the project. The, the public safety for fire apparatus, getting in and not being able to turn around. All these things came from the TAC, our peer review as unsatisfactory and unsafe. That, that to me, uh, you know, we had to work on, and the only way to work on that is to, uh, lower the density, create the size, and that was, we just never got to that point uh, until the very end, as you had mentioned in your opening comments, but it was little, uh, literally a little bit too, too little, too late, i-if you may. You know, so one of the things we always have to do, Mr. Chair, as I sit on these, is weigh the need for housing, which is a critical need. I mean, we've approved every forty-B that's been in front of us. Wakefield does not shy away from housing. If anything, our board has criticized that we do too much housing, it's what comes in front of us. Uh, but secondly, you have to weigh the need for housing versus the, the, the criteria of safety, safety to our neighborhood, and safety to the residents on the Haunt Street, uh, as well as, does this project fit in to the neighborhood, and does it not, uh, degrade the neighborhood? And I, I think we never, never got there because of the flawed process. So, um, in my humble opinion, uh, the, the need for housing in this particular case does not outweigh the safety concerns that, that have been raised and never addressed, as well as the size and fitting into the neighborhood that's never been addressed. You know, Nahant Street is, is a through street to two schools in town, and actually three, because that two schools going in the north and one school, the Galvin, coming in the south. It, it's a busy, busy road, and it's not a great road, you know, it's not, it's a curvy, uh, narrow road, and, um, this project just doesn't fit in onto, onto this street. So those are my initial thoughts, I think the process has been flawed, uh, and I think that the applicant did not meet, uh, the standards that we would be looking for, uh, in moving forward. That's my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, sorry.
Go ahead.
Mickey, did you wanna go?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would, you know, a lot of same thoughts that, that Chip had, um, you know, again, the primary concern was massing intensity from day one, as it relates to public safety, um, and, you know, as, as other board members will know, you know, we've done several forty-B projects, and we've had mass housing consultants work with us on these, and I remember distinctly, uh, cause I was chair for several of those, that it was imperative to get the most important issues out on the table first and work through them before you move on to the other details, right? Solve the biggest problems first. And this was the first and only project where it was completely flipped. The applicant wanted to do everything else first, get everything out there before they even wanted to talk about massing intensity, and it just took far too long to get there, right? It took almost till we were about to make a vote in September for them to say, okay, well, well, we'll, we'll, we'll start considering some changes, right? So, um, it's the first time that's ever happened, right? Uh, we've approved the, the other fortyBs as Chip, uh, Tarbell mentioned, uh, because we worked through them, and we were able to find it some common ground and make it work. And this just did not get there, as, as Chip said. Uh, you know, conceptually, yeah, it's, it's just too big. Uh, the public safety and other aspects are still there, um, never truly vetted, um, in, in my mind, and, um, you know, the other thing that I, I remember bringing up in, in September meeting was the, the, um, the actual definition of local concern, right? That is the need to protect health or safety of the occupants of a proposed project, or of the residents of the municipality to protect the natural environment, to promote better site and building design in relation to the surroundings and municipal and regional planning, or to preserve open spaces. That's the definition from the state regulation, right? And so that's what we were, we were challenged to, to, um, to weigh with this project as we are with all the others. Um, and of course, the burden of proof on the part of the applicant is to prove that that local need for housing outweighs those local concerns with the granting of all these waivers of, of various zoning requirements, and the board has to then, on their side, on our side, find that, no, that the local concerns outweigh, you know, the need, um, if the circumstances and, and the testimony prove that out. And over the course of the year, or, or several months of, of this project and public hearing, I just don't, I don't think we got there. I don't think the applicant got um, and satisfied their burden of proof, and I, I, those concerns, the local concerns still outweigh, in this case, um, the housing need for, for housing. So, uh, again, I, I had other comments, but Chip already kinda made a lot of the same ones. I just wanted to add my other thoughts, um, and I'll leave it right there for now as my opening comments, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. Mickey, you were gonna?
Hello, um, Mr. Chair, a couple things. If I'm not mistaken, um, just to go back in time, and this really isn't pertaining so much to this project, but just to, the, the parcel in general, if I'm not mistaken, there was a regular, um, development plan for here that had thirty-three units, I believe.
Yeah, something like that.
And that got pan, and because it was too large, too dense, and it was. And, and just the, this is not a NIMBY, we don't want affordable housing, we don't wanna, we don't want, we didn't want um, a, a poorly planned, too large, too dense, um, regular housing, uh, here. Affordable housing, we all want affordable housing, but it doesn't entitle anybody to triple what nobody wanted in the first place. And, um, the, the filibustering from day one, um, just to go back in time a little bit, there was a, he, he had a, the, the project had an engineer, the engineer um, left, quit, doesn't do it anymore, whatever the excuse was, we didn't have an engineer or reports until months and months into the process, and fortyBs different than everything else in that uh, there's a clock, and it was just, I don't know when we finally got engineering plans that were, um, even close to where they need to be, if they are today, which I don't know that they are. It is a very important street for the town. It's a, uh, very important, important street for all of our, um, kids, students, high school, um, elementary, junior high, they all go through that street, and the last letter we got from TAC was, it's not safe. And a lot of me, um, coupled with the, okay, maybe we'll take ten units off, or twenty units, or whatever it is, um, it just, it, it, it's tone deaf as to, um, just to go to Dave and Chip's comments, you know, the town's need for housing is not outweighed by the safety of our kids, and we, we are building two big um, schools at the end of the street. They're all getting there through Nahant Street. And the T- Traffic Advisory Committee just came back, or the latest letter I saw, says it's an unsafe project, and now that's not even taken into consideration the, um, comments from neighbors. There has been not one person who said, gee, this is a great, great size, I think it's, it's something we can work with. And there's really never been any heed given to our comments, or their comments, or TAC's comments, or the need for, we've never been able to have, um, the town really look at the town's various subject matter experts and so on, cause we never really got finished products. I mean, I know at the end we said, well, we'll take twenty off, but I never saw those plans, and I don't think they were developed to the level where, um, they could seriously be looked at by town experts. So, um, this has been a long process, I don't, I don't wanna talk much further, but, um, it, it, it's, it's frustrating, it, I've never, ever seen anything like this, where there's just been a filibuster that hasn't um, provided adequate information on anything, I, on pretty much anything. And, um, that, that has clouded, um, some of these discussions and a lot of my thinking on where I stand on the project. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Mickey. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll just, I'll just bounce off what, uh, Mickey was saying. Um, I agree with everything that was said. I think this land has a huge potential for housing, a housing project, but like, like Mickey said, the first one that came to us a few years back was bounced. This one just didn't take into account the concerns of the fellow neighbors. Um, they heard, I mean, there were countless peoples come, countless people coming week after week to these meetings, and they weren't, you know, unable to work with us, unable to work with the, the neighbors, and, um, I get it, I mean, I'm a contractor, you start out big, you, you're gonna start out with a hundred, if you can get a hundred and fifty, you're gonna start with a hundred and fifty and work your way down, and you guys did, but you didn't really, you know, you didn't give us more time, we probably could've got this passed. I, I've been on the board six years, and I don't think there was any, any project that hasn't been passed. Um, because the, there's contracts out there that are willing to spend the time, give us, like, we asked for more time, and you, you just give us the runaround. Um, we would've, we would've worked on this for another year if we had to, I, I believe. I mean, I would've, we, we'd come to this meeting every two weeks, we would've just kept going. But I understand it's money, um, but I think you guys, if you kept, if you kept at it and kept downsizing, you could've got something in here, because there will be a housing project that gets there. Um, but you just, you were unable to work with us, so. You know, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Anybody else?
Good job, I, um, I came in halfway through, so I didn't have the benefit of the beginning process. I do this for a living, um, I haven't been as active in my own community as I probably should've been. I think that my takeaway really was the safety and the inability for the applicant to hear and respond to that safety concern, and no one, no one can stand behind a development that in the end isn't safe for the occupants or the residents. In addition to, I mean, I, I work with neighbors all the time to get projects approved, it's the first thing you do, you work with your neighbors, because that's who you're gonna be with um, into the future. So I know that I am not a voting member, I know I am really probably speaking at the moment more as a resident, um, but I did just want to to say those words, that it, it was disappointing, um, for my first exposure to that process, so I'm happy to hear there was positive ones out there.
Great, thank you.
I wanna say, um, I agree with everybody else too, like, I think every meeting we talked about, it's not safe, it's big, and all the neighbors, they all had the concerns, no one, no one said this is a great project, but it's just, they just not, they didn't try to listen to us and work with us, so it's, it's, it's very disappointing one year, year and a little bit over years.
Yep. Thank you. All right, um, Greg, if you don't have anything, I have some comments, I'm gonna save to the end to when we, we take the vote on the overall comprehensive permit that uh, uh, won in the record, but I agree with everything that was said about, you know, safety being the number one concern, not overriding the, the need for local housing. And I do think in, um, I've been doing this type of work too for, on both sides of the table for, uh, more years than I can admit, it's over thirty years now, and, uh, the deficiency in the submittals, not getting sufficiently detailed plans, I think really hurt as well. One could almost, while the, the application to the state was filled out properly, I could think I could make a case that we, you know, we didn't have a, a complete application that was needed, or a complete package of information that the town needed to really rule uh, on this, on this matter. So with that, um, I don't wanna belabor that, because we have a lot of waivers to get through, and we need, as I said, the process requires us to go through them one by one. It will be, uh, again, it might start to get a little tedious, but we, we need to go through each waiver, and we're gonna take a roll call vote on each waiver. And so are folks ready to do that, or does anyone wanna add anything, or if someone has a different type of process they wanna do, I'm, I'm all ears, but I thought this was the best way to kinda organize our thinking and then get through this.
So, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, are you gonna share your screen and share the waivers so everyone sees them?
Yeah.
As we discuss them, are we gonna do a roll call vote, literally, like motions for each one? To approve, accept, or deny each potential waiver?
The, the, the way the motion should be for, there should be made a motion, make a motion for the, for the waiver, there'll be a discussion on the motion, and then for each one, we'll vote, yeah, a yes vote is for the waiver, a no vote is to deny the waiver. So folks clear on that?
Yeah.
And we might as well just roll through, um, I'll share my screen, and we might as well just take one waiver at a time, and take the vote after we're done discussing the waiver, and work our way right through the list, so we're not, um, going back and forth. Folks, okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna try to pull up the waivers right now. Okay, people seeing that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, this was the, um, list of waivers that the applicant, uh, obviously you'll see the date there. It wasn't in the original application, the, these were updated on June twenty-first of, uh, last year. Couple of notes here, that obviously, that the site is in two districts, uh, a single residence and a business district, and that will, uh, have some impact on some of our thoughts, probably on the waivers that are being, uh, sought. And with that, we might as well get right into it. Does one, uh, Dave or Chip, do you guys wanna walk through, take the lead in walking through, uh, these, or you want me to?
Glass. Chip, do you have a preference?
I mean, I can, Dave, you can, I don't, it's up to you.
I can, I got notes too on all of them, so it's up to you guys.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, why don't you take the lead, and we'll just, we'll.
Okay, let's get right into it. Do you see how the chart's set up? There's the article, the section, the provision, and then the requested exemption or waiver. First one is waivers sought from the entire article of Article Three, which relates to districts. And sections referenced generally to the extent the proposed development shown on the plans is not in the compliance with the provisions of the zoning bylaw. Look at this one. You know, my initial thoughts were, you know, that, that they're seeking a hundred units, it's on a site of one point seven two acres. Um, the app, applicant, as we've discussed, hasn't met the threshold of, of proving that the, the need for housing, uh, overweighs uh, safety concerns that the town has, um, the application, um, because the development plan in the application has significant safety concerns identified by the town's Traffic Advisory Committee, um, that's a problem. Additionally, the hundred-unit project doesn't fit within the context of the neighborhood, in both size and in lack of green space.
So, Mr. Chair, just on this first page, do we have to go through that first one first, the one ninety-six first, on its own, and then go to the next one? They just happen to be lumped together, I think, cause they're in the same article.
Right.
By law. So on the first one, yeah, I mean, multifamily Yeah, I mean, multifamily resident, residential uses are prohibited. They're allowed with special permits, so on its face, that one seems okay because they would need something, right? There's nothing on its face that says that that. Wouldn't be the case in, in a forty B application like this, right? So I don't know if we need to vote on that one on its own and then go to one ninety dash nine, which I think is what one you were speaking to, right?
Yeah, I wanna do, I wanna do them all.
Right, so with one ninety dash six. Uh, the waiver sought for the entire article and section reference generally as, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, because of green space. Size and things like that, um. Yeah, I don't, I don't think this waiver should be allowed because of many, because of all the things you just listed. And what I'm happy to, to read the waivers after this time, so that. Uh, you can continue to chair the, the meeting.
Yeah, and I, I, I think an, an overriding theme on these waivers is a couple of things. A, the number of waivers in of itself. Shows how inappropriate this development plan is. You know, we've all talked about how many forty Bs we've gone through here, we, we, and we have approved many of them. And you'll see even in the one we're gonna do next, there's six or seven, there's about thirty, a little bit more than thirty waivers that are needed for this project. That in of itself tells me that there's something really inappropriate with the development plan. And with a lot of them, the general statement is by granting the waiver, you're allowing a project to go forward. That has been deemed unsafe by our public safety officials, both the police, fire, and DPW. So, th- those general themes, I think, can be kinda carried through each one of these waivers. So, in, in the back of my mind, I don't know if we have to repeat that all the time or just reference it, but I think, um. I think it, w- we might want to, so.
I, I think we need to reference it. So that people can either say yea or nay based on some facts. So, you know, this would be because the uses are allowed and, and be in districts. With a special permit, um, the, the issue is we would probably not allow a special permit. In a normal case, uh, so that thus they need a waiver. Uh, to not have a special permit for the forty B, so because it's size and unsafe. Uh, I would be uh. Against the waiver for this article and section.
Yeah, a- and in asking for density that wouldn't be allowed, even if it was in. Entirely in the district that allowed multifamily housing, which it's not. Because of the two types of zonings, the two zoning districts it's in. You know, I, I think that's another consideration.
All right, so, Mr. Chair, I mean, if we have to get to motion so we can just vet each of these via discussion and a vote. So, uh, I would move that we deny the acceptance of waiver uh, for one ninety dash six.
I'll second that motion.
Motion, uh, motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion?
So are we?
A yes vote would be a no vote, technically, right?
No, Dave, yeah, I think you need to withdraw your motion. And just. You should, you should put it forward like we put all, all our other motions forward, as if.
Motion to approve it, and then we'll all.
To, to weigh it.
Okay, I was making a motion to deny it, so if you, if you all said, yes, I accept the denial.
Yeah, that, you know, that's, you're right, that's fine. All right, let's just make sure what, what we're saying, yes or no. So, y- your motion, it, okay, motion's been made and seconded, it's a motion to deny. So if you're gonna deny the waiver, you're voting yes. If you want the waiver to be approved or don't agree with the denial, you vote no. Regular voting members. Dave.
Who, we're doing roll calls?
Yes, regular voting members.
Hi.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes to waiver is denied.
Mr. Chair, I move that we deny the, the waiver one ninety dash nine as stated in the, on, uh, in the uh. In the document.
I think we need to read them, don't we?
I would, let's use belt and suspend.
So let me, let me.
Okay.
Let me try, try this one. So I, I'm, I'm. I move that we look at a waiver of the reference provisions without limitation. And that this waiver seeks zoning relief and allowing the construction of a hundred units of apartment-style rental. Multifamily housing, an exception, is sought from the citing cited zoning bylaw. Prohibitions according to allow the proposed multifamily development, as shown on the plans, as may be amended. And superseded. The zoning board of appeals shall act on behalf of all local boards as defined in seven sixty C M R fifty six. In the grant of any and all required variances, special permits, site plan review, review. Local conservation relief pursuant to the Town of Wakefield Wetlands Regulations, and any and all. Other relief required to allow for development of the property. A comprehensive permit may provide all local permits and approvals pursuant to M G L C forty B twenty one through twenty three. And seventy sixty M, C M R fifty six, enabling construction of the proposed multifamily development. To meet the local and regional housing need in the town of Wakefield. Thus, uh. So going back, that's the waiver being sought. And again, uh, we talked about in our general opening comments, that the developer has not met. That the need for housing has not been seen or met, uh, in. Reference to because of safety, neighborhood concerns. The size of the project not fitting into the neighborhood, uh, so that the local and regional housing needs. Uh, do not overweight the. Concerns uh, for safety primarily in the town.
And Dave, maybe you can just as part of this, uh, also talk about, repeat the local needs. That section of the statute, that they don't meet, not in terms of safety, but if you can go over those two, please. You had a good list at the beginning of the meeting here.
Right, so the local concern. Mr. Chair. Yeah, that's the, the need to protect the health or, or safety of the occupants of a proposed project, or of the residents of the municipality. To protect the natural environment, to promote better site and building design in relation to the surroundings and municipal and regional planning. Or to preserve open spaces. So that's, that's the definition of local concern from the state statute. And as I stated, yeah. There's a burden of proof there, and you know, this one, again, I, I would agree with Chip, it's. It just doesn't, it doesn't pass the test for this one as well.
Agreed. Any other comments? And we'll then, then we'll take a motion. Chip, did you make a motion?
I, I said that there, there was a, that I did put it in the form of a motion, that. That the waiver, the motion was that the waiver was seeking. The relief from the concrete permits, all that at the bottom. So I think right now you could just vote. No denies it.
Let's get a second on the motion.
I'll second Chip's motion.
Okay, the way you worded it, I guess, is the denial?
No, a yes would be to approve the, I, I think it's the easiest thing, is a yes is to approve the waiver. A no is to deny the waiver.
Okay.
And that's how.
Yeah, let's be consistent going forward.
I think that makes the most sense.
Okay.
That to approve the waiver is a yes, to deny the waiver is a no.
Perfect, okay, regular voting members. Chip.
No.
Dave.
No.
Joe.
No.
Mickey.
No.
I vote no as well. Waiver's not granted.
Okay, in Article Four Use Regulations, we're moving. A waiver is sought for the, from the entire article and section. Reference generally to the extent the proposed development shown of the plans is not in compliance with the provisions of the zoning bylaw. So the applicant seeks a waiver of reference provisions without limitation. And seek zoning relief to allow construction of a hundred units of apartment-style rental multifamily housing. An exemption is sought from the cited zoning bylaw prohibitions. Accordingly, to allow the proposed multifamily development as shown on the plans, as may be amended and superseded. The zoning board of appeals shall act on behalf of all local boards as defined in seventy six, seven hundred and sixty C M R fifty six. In the grant of any and all required variances, special permits, site plan review, local conservation relief pursuant to the Town of Wakefield. Regulations, and any and all relief required to allow, allow the development of the property. A comprehensive permit may provide all local permits and approvals pursuant to M G L. C four fifty twenty one through twenty three and seven sixty. C M R fifty six, enabling construction of the proposed multifamily development. To meet the local and regional, regional housing needs in the town of Wakefield.
Second that motion. Nope, go ahead, Joe, you're the second man.
I'll second Chip's motion. I don't know if he was gonna elaborate, but.
Any discussion on that motion?
No, Mr. Chair, I think it's, again, more the same, and again, I, I just concerned with. You know, any waiver that seeks. Uh, waiving, you know, any and all sections of our bylaws, right? Without specific reference for specific needs for, for the project, right? So, just referencing several paragraphs and just saying, we, we, we see waivers from all of it. Right, to do a hundred units, which again, we've already determined, um, that that's just not feasible and applicable and with the safety concerns, so. I think much of the same previous arguments apply here, and uh. I think it's, in my opinion, the same, same vote is needed.
Agreed, any other comments? Regular voting members, Chip.
No.
Joe.
No.
Dave.
No.
Mickey.
No.
I vote no as well, waiver's denied. Next one's on Article Six Dimensional Regulations.
Yep. So. This one, yard requirements from all districts, where, so, you know, they're talking about side and yard setbacks. Um, distance from the front yard setback, uh, minimum open space, all of that is included in the dimensional regulations. So. We move that a waiver is sought for the entire article and sections referenced generally to extend. The proposed development shown on the plans is not in compliance with the provisions of the zoning bylaw. The applicant seeks waiver of the reference provisions without limitation. And seeks zoning relief to allow construction of a hundred units of apartment style. With provisions a hundred and thirty seven parking spaces of a ratio of one point three seven parking spaces per unit. Rental multifamily housing, an exception, is sought for the cited zoning bylaw prohibit. Prohibitions according to allow the proposed multifamily development, as shown on the plans. The zoning board of appeals shall act on behalf of all local boards as defined in seventy sixty C M R fifty six. In the grant of any and all required variances and special permits, site plan review, local conservation life. Relief pursuant to the Town of Wakefield Wetlands Regulations, and any and all of. Other relief required to allow for the development of the property. A comprehensive permit may provide all local permits and approvals pursuant to M G L C four fifty twenty one dash twenty three. Seven sixty C M R fifty six, enabling construction of the proposed multifamily development to meet. The local and regional housing need in the town of Wakefield. Um, this one is, is. You know, we talk about screening and buffer strips all the time, we talk about landscaping, they're looking for this waiver. To allow for none of that to have to take place. We talked about green space on this project, we talked about. How close the neighbors were, we talked about all of those things. And this waiver would provide them to have to not meet any of the regulations, uh, including, you know. For. Uh, the neighborhood, and this is where we really hit on the dimensional relief that the. Building that was proposed in the plans does not fit into the neighborhood, and doesn't work within the neighborhood. In my humble opinion.
Seconded.
All right, any further discussion?
No, just to piggyback on what Chip said, again, just waiving any and all requirements in one ninety thirty one, all the dimensional stuff is just completely inappropriate. And just saying, you know, we're not gonna adhere to any of it. Just doesn't, doesn't pass the test, as, as we've discussed.
Yeah, by waiving it, the density is the, the issue driving the safety concerns, so. Allowing this waiver to be approved would, uh, allow an unsafe project, so. All right, any other discussion? Hearing seeing none, regular voting members again, Chip.
No.
Joe.
No.
Dave.
No.
Mickey.
No.
I vote no as well, waiver is not granted. Here we go.
All right, so this is Article Seven Parking and Loading Requirements. So there's a waiver sought from the entire article, move that the way, that. Make a motion for a waiver for the entire article and sections referenced generally to the extent the proposed development shown on the plans. Is not in compliance with the provisions of the zoning bylaw. The applicant seeks a waiver of the reference provisions without limitation and seeks zoning relief to allow construction. Of a hundred units of apartment-style rental for a. Rental multifamily housing with provisions for a hundred and thirty seven parking spaces, resulting in a parking ratio of one point three seven spaces. Per unit, an exception is sought from the citing cited zoning board. Bylaws, prohibitions according to allow the proposed multifamily development, as shown on the plans. As may be amended and superseded, the zoning board of appeals shall act on behalf of the local boards. As defined in seven sixty C M R fifty six, and the grant of any and all required variances, special permits. Site plan review, local conservation, belief pursuant to the Town of Wakefield Wetlands Regulations. And any and all other relief required to allow for the development of the property. A comprehensive permit may provide all local permits and approvals pursuant to M G L four. Forty B twenty one dash twenty three and seven sixty C M R fifty six. Enabling construction of the proposed multifamily development to meet. The local and regional housing need in the town of Wakefield.
Chip, let's get a second before.
Second now, yeah, then discussion, thank you. I, I kind of went too quick last time.
Seconded.
Thank you, Joe, discussion?
So this. This ends up with landscaping of the parking lot, if you can just peel back a little bit, Dave, so, other, uh, not Dave, Tom. Um, to look at the, the parts of this, it's traffic aisles, aisle. It's traffic aisles, aisle width. Size of parking spaces, you know, all of these things have been tried to be squeezed in. Uh, to this law. Landscaping lack thereof. Um, so to allow relief of all these things. When it comes to parking landscape strips. Uh. It goes into. Um, you know, the safety concerns that both police and fire had with being able to get into and around the, the building. Um. And. Uh, I believe that because of the safety concerns that the TAC brought forward. On the parking and, uh, again, fitting into the neighborhood and. The, the widths requirements and all that that are normal in our developments. Uh, that this. Is inappropriate because of. The safety concerns and the inability of it. Fitting into the neighborhood.
Any other discussion?
Again, just blanket, blanket waiver of an entire article of our zoning bylaw. So, just. Doesn't fit, doesn't work for me.
All right, uh, regular voting members, Chip?
No.
Joe?
No.
Dave?
No.
Mickey?
No.
I vote no, waivers denied.
Under Article Eight Special Permits and Site Plan Review.
Whoop, sorry, hold on.
So this move. I move that the, the waiver seeks. The motion. Seeks for a waiver. Of the entire articles and sections referenced generally to the extent of the proposed development shown in the plans. Is not in compliance with the provisions. Of the zoning bylaw. So the article. The applicant seeks a waiver of the reference provisions without limitation and seeks zoning relief to allow construction of a hundred units. Of apartment style rental multifamily housing with provisions for a hundred and thirty seven parking spaces. Resulting. In a parking ratio of one point three seven spaces per unit and a. And exception is sought from the cited zoning bylaw provisions according to the allow the proposed multifamily development. As shown on the plans as may be amended and superseded. The zoning board of appeal shall act on behalf of all local boards as defined in seventy sixty CMR. Fifty six and the grant of any and all required. Variances, special permits, site plan review, local conservation relief pursuant to the town of Wakefield Wetlands Regulations. And any and all. Other relief required to allow for the development of the property. A comprehensive permit may provide all local permits and approvals pursuant to MGL. C forty. B twenty one dash twenty three and seven sixty CMR fifty six. Enabling construction of the proposed multifamily development to meet the ro. Local and regional housing need in the town of Wakefield.
Seconded.
Okay, discuss, discussion.
Yeah, so this is to get rid of. Uh, the special permit need. Um, which for us. Uh, we always discuss, you know, the need for housing. Um. The application. You know. And we, I think we have demonstrated. In. This case that. Uh, the need for the housing is not superseded by. Uh, the need for safety and it fitting into the neighborhood. So I don't think that it's reasonable to eliminate the conditions and safeguards. That are put in for a normal, uh, special permit.
Mister Chair, I read this. Kind of a little differently maybe than, than Chip did, but. Waiving the entire section eight about special permits and site plan review. What's being waived here? They submitted a site plan, we did site plan review. The board is the, there's the special granting, special permit granting authority, what's being waived, what's being requested, so I found this whole. Section, this whole waiver somewhat confusing on what they're asking to waive, really. If they're actually wa- waiving site plan review and special permits. Well, that's what we did anyway, right? So, there's maybe some details in here that are somewhat. Potentially wavable, but by and large, this section is more administrative and says. The board is, you know, the granting authority and will have open hearings, right, one ninety. The second page, one ninety forty eight, public hearing and review process. Yeah, we did that. So, again, I'm not entirely clear what they were asking to waive here, so I find the whole thing a little bit confusing in my mind. But on its face, I would say, no. We're not waiving it, we did it. And it, for the most part, in my mind.
Uh, some of the waivers that are a little bit more innocuous than others for sure, but I think at this point, any waiver that we grant. Might, you know, could allow a project to go forward as we discussed, it's unsafe, that doesn't fit the context of the neighborhood. So, i- i- at this point, given where we're heading, it, uh. With the denial of all these waivers so far, I, I, I see no reason not to deny this one.
Oh, I hear you, I'm just saying, I, I wouldn't deny like the, the fact that we're gonna hold special hearings for this. You know. Not gonna, not gonna accept it.
We. So. We closed the public hearing, so that's done.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion? Regular voting members, Chip?
No.
Joe?
No.
Dave?
No.
Mickey?
No.
I vote no as well, that waiver is not granted. Well, I said at the beginning of this, David, might be a little tedious with some of these, cause you know, I didn't, you know, when the closer you some of them are, they're. I'm assuming their attorney was using belt and suspenders, so.
I understand, totally understand, just.
So this is a, a waiver under Article Ten Administration and Enforcement. Um. So, the applicants, so I move. And make a motion. For a waiver of the referenced article provisions and sections without limitation. And it seeks zoning relief from the specific and applicable requirements of the provisions. To the extent they vest any powers and duties over the proposed development. And any local board or municipal body other than the zoning board of appeals. Pursuant to MGL forty B twenty one through twenty three. And seven and sixty CMR fifty six. And to allow the proposed multifamily development as shown on the plan submitted here with, as may be amended and superseded. A comprehensive permit may provide all local permits. And approvals pursuant to MGL forty B twenty one dash twenty three. Uh, and seven sixty CMR fifty six, enabling construction of the proposed multifamily development. Uh. To meet the local. And regional housing needs for the town of Wakefield.
Seconded.
Dave, motion's been made and seconded, uh, discussion.
So I found a couple things in here. Um, that just. Weren't updated, like they referenced the select board when it should be town council. Um. So, I think they're minor things. Uh, so I think in general. Um, again, this is. You know, administratively. Um, just trying to get everybody else out of the picture. Uh, and eliminate the need to go to any other boards if necessary, so I find this waiver to be. Uh. Unnecessary and li- too limiting. Uh, so. I would, and you know, again, it comes down to the project is unsafe. Uh, and too large for the, for the property, so. I would not be in favor of this wave.
Same comments as the previous one, Mister Chair, agreed, just doesn't seem appropriate to request a waiver from this, so not in favor of granting it.
Okay, any, anybody else? Regular voting members, Chip?
No.
Joe?
No.
Dave?
No.
Mickey?
No.
I vote no as well, waivers denied. Same here, we can be quick with this one on the signs.
Yeah, Article Three. See, uh, move is, uh, uh, I, a motion. Is moved to waive the entire article reference generally to the extent the proposed development shown on the plan is not compliance with the provisions of the zoning bylaw.
Second, but it was Article of thirteen, not three.
Thirteen, I'm sorry.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Assuming this, the last couple covered this one as well, so. Uh, regular voting members, Chip?
No.
Joe?
No.
Dave?
No.
Mickey?
No.
I vote no as well. Waivers denied.
This is. An Article Fifteen. Residential development. Uh, open space development, housing affordability. Uh, and, uh, the. Move a waiver. For the entire article and sections referenced generally to extent. The proposed development shown the plans is not in compliance with the provisions of the zoning boat bylaw.
Seconded.
Dave, motion's been made and seconded, uh, discussion. I, I, I think, uh. You know, this is one of the ones where several people mentioned in the beginning, there's been a significant increase in the number of local housing units. And this board has approved every forty B in, in my time here, and I think in every one that's coming. Every comprehensive permit that's come before the board. Um. This project is the outlier. That despite numerous requests, the development team was unwilling to engage on significant safety issues. That were the direct result of the proposed density of the project. So therefore, I cannot support this waiver.
I would just add, Mister Chair, I'm not even sure one ninety ninety three applies to us, the open space development really is a no, planning board kind of thing, so. Again, part of it is just blanket request for entire articles. Um, so I just, I don't, I don't see this one as. Being appropriate and not in favor of it.
Yeah, and it talks about the housing affordability, which.
And I would agree, not just forty B, but all the, the, the multifamilies we've done with the inclusionary housing, right, I mean, uh, affordability, um. You know, we've, the town has certainly done its share in this board. To try to improve the housing affordability, right, and the stock. We've certainly done our share. Um, this one, no, no.
Yeah, we've done our share to the point, Dave, where I'm not shopping in groceries in Wakefield anymore, so.
Right.
Anybody else?
Mister Chair, when I started seven years ago, we, we were at like six point two, six point five. Of the, um, affordable, uh, housing inventory, we're right near ten, we, we've added thirty percent. Of our affordable housing, um, and, and. You know, there's been movement, this isn't it.
Yeah. Agreed. All right, hearing, no further discussion, regular voting members, uh, Chip?
No.
Joe?
No.
Dave?
No.
Mickey?
No.
And I vote no as well, uh, waiver is denied. Next up.
Chapter one nine, zoning. Generally.
Yeah.
Uh, um, this is, uh. Again. Uh, a, a big wide open one, so the, there's a motion. To waive the reference provisions and sections without limitation and seek zoning relief from the specific and applicable requirements. Of these provisions and to allow the proposed multifamily development as shown on the plan submitted here with. As may be amended or superseded, a comprehensive permit may provide all local permits and approvals pursuant. To MGL C forty B twenty one dash twenty three and seven sixty. CMR fifty six, enabling construction of the proposed multifamily development to meet the local and regional housing needs. In the town of Wakefield.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, um. Any discussion?
Um, Mister Chair. Notice that, um, this references the town of Southborough.
I'm sure that's just a typo from the applicant, so duly noted.
But again, Mister Chair, by waiving the entire chap, the zoning chapter, right? Inappropriate, just, just. Just not the way you do it, you don't request relief from the entire section as some blanket thing to do a project, so, no. No. Don't agree with this waiver at all.
And again, allowing this waiver would, would allow an unsafe project to move forward, so I can't support this either.
Yeah.
Okay, uh. Hearing no further discussion, regular voting members, Chip?
No.
Joe?
No.
Dave?
No.
Mickey?
No.
And I vote no, waiver is denied.
So this is, uh, article under. Articles two. Um, stormwater management and land disturbance. So. The move for a waiver of the reference present, provisions without limitation. Uh, and seek zoning relief to allow construction of a multifamily residence, an exception is sought from the cited zoning bylaw. Pro, provisions according to allow to. To allow the proposed development as shown on the plans as may be amended and superseded. The applicant will comply with the Mass State Storm Water Standards. And NPDES Construction General Permit Requirements as applicable. A comprehensive permit may provide all local permits and approvals pursuant to MGL. Forty B twenty one dash twenty three and seven sixty CMR fifty six. Enabling construction of the proposed development to meet the local and regional housing needs in the town of Wakefield.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion.
So here they say they meet in their technical report. Uh, that they meet all the stormwater requirements, however. If they don't, they don't think they should need to, and that's what the waiver would say. I, I have not seen the final. Uh, agreement between the town of Wakefield and. Uh, this applicant. Uh, in regards to the stormwater management and whether they've answered all engineering questions, so. We have not seen. From our peer. Uh, consultants and from our peers that. The statement is actually true, so I can't support this waiver.
Agree, Mister Chair, again, seeking, they, they'd have to meet. The stormwater management requirements of the city in the state. Um. And waiving any of that, um, again, given the scope of the project, the size of the project, the potential blasting of the project. And the concerns with the neighborhood and flooding and all of the stuff that came up during the public hearing. Um, I wouldn't be comfortable waiving any aspect of that. Right, so to Chip's point, even, even with a, uh. Yeah, without having seen all the final, uh, agreements with the final plans. Um, I would not be in favor of waiving any requirements related to stormwater management.
Agreed, and I'll, I'll just add that the usual. Branding this waiver allows a project to move forward that has been deemed unsafe, so. By our public safety experts. Um. Anybody else? Regular voting members, Chip?
No.
Joe?
No.
Dave?
No.
Mickey?
No.
I vote no as well, waiver is denied. Chapter three twenties coming up, I think, the next one. We're getting there, guys.
So this is Chapter three twenty Wakefield subdivision regulations regarding the subdivision of land generally. And, um. again, since we weren't, didn't have the ability to go through with the applicant, I don't really know why this is, this isn't really. So they're looking for a wave, that, there's a mo- I move for a waiver from any applicable provisions of this regulation regarding joining of lots, the regulation of roadways, driveways, passageways, or which are otherwise applicable to the instant project and to allow for the proposed multifamily.
Seconded.
And again, so if we accepted this waiver, um, it could fall back from roadways, driveways, and passageways and allow uh, for a unsafe project to be built, as the TAC has noted, uh, that this is an unsafe project.
Agreed, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, regular voting members, Chip?
No.
Joe?
No.
Dave?
No.
Mickey?
No.
Uh, I vote no as well. Waiver is denied. I think this is our last one.
So this is generally applicable bylaws, charters, general bylaws. Um, okay, so move to wa- waive the specific and applicable requirements of the provisions, including without limitation any regulations or requirements which are more restrictive than state building, public health, and fire code requirements and/or from any conditions which may be imposed on the proposed development, which require utility, water, wastewater connection fees, inflow and infiltration fees, INI fees, which are not required by local bylaw or written regulation, and which are not charged in the normal course to market rate and non-subdivising housing, and to generally allow the proposed multifamily development as shown on the plans submitted here with, as may be amended or superseded.
Seconded.
Well, we got a little more here.
Oh, I'm sorry, a comprehensive permit may provide all local permits and approvals pursuant to MGL C four fifty twenty-one twenty-three and seven sixty CMR fifty-six, enabling construction of the proposed multifamily development to meet the local and regional housing need in the town of Wakefield.
Now, I'll second.
Big discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we're not going to generally waive the town bylaws and charters and to, to waive all the requirements that may be applicable to build something that is deemed unsafe, so, no. Not in favor.
Agreed. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, regular voting members. Chip?
No.
Joe?
No.
Dave?
No.
Mickey?
No.
I vote no as well, that waiver is also denied. I believe all that's left in this document is the table dimensions.
Yeah.
So back on the screen.
All right, uh, now, Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate, um, based on our earlier discussion, based on the findings from all our peer consultants, predominantly traffic advisory and other town consultants, that this project is unsafe? Being with the fact that we have now denied every waiver request that they have, I move that we deny the comprehensive permit, uh, as stated.
I'll second that, Chip.
Motion's been made and seconded, uh, any discussion here?
No, I would just add, again, that it based this, this motion in our ultimate vote is based on the determination that the proposal doesn't comply with matters of health, safety, environment, design, open space, or other matters of local concern, which outweigh the housing need in the town of Wakefield.
Yep. Yeah, I'll, I'll just add, you know, we looked at the evidence presented to the board, which includes submissions from the applicants, development team, town subject matter experts, including leaders of the Wakefield Fire and Police Departments, as well as testimony from neighbors and citizens. We took all the evidence into consideration, and the board looked thoughtfully and carefully at each waiver, and the reasons to deny them all were overwhelming. First and foremost, the proposed development was deemed unsafe, related to all the things the TAC said. And for the record, I want to read in TAC summary. Which, of course, I keep, hold on one second. Summary paragraph from the Traffic Advisory Committee. It states throughout the document, the TAC continues to have serious concerns about the potential impacts the proposed project could have on public safety in the area. As mentioned previously, this project has been discussed at four TA seedings. All four of those meetings and throughout the comment and response documents, the primary concern of the TAC has been expressed consistently. There are still unresolved issues related to the size of the development, parking supply, site access and circulation, site distance, emergency vehicle access, and overall safety along the Han Street. TAC's primary concern for public is for public safety. The density of the site creates constraints that are the primary driver of the safety impacts to the neighborhood. These constraints could be avoided with a different site layout. Due to the significant safety concerns of the current plan, the TAC cannot support the project in its current form. So I wanted to read that in formally to the public record on this vote. Um, and add, you know, I'll just reiterate, I think Dave and Joe and, and, uh, Chip and everybody else, um, I'll reiterate those points on the local need, not addressing the local concerns. Any other comments? Okay, regular voting members, so the motion, Dave, Chip, the motion has been made in what language again?
So on this one, based on everything that we presented tonight, I move that we deny the comprehensive permit. So a yes vote would deny it, a no vote would allow it.
Okay. Regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. The permit is denied. Uh, I think that wraps up that item. We can move on. I'm gonna ask for a two-minute recess. I'll be right back. Okay. We good? All right to go. Next up on the agenda is, uh, case twenty-four twenty thirty-two Nahand Street LLC. Again, uh, this is a application for a comprehensive permit pursuant to MGL forty B. Uh, the public hearing in this is also closed. This is going to be a session for the board to deliberate. We won't be hearing from the applicant from any of the town departments, nor will we accept public testimony. Uh, I think we should go through the, uh, same process. This one's a little less arduous with, uh, much fewer waivers. Um, but we'll take general comments upfront. Um, and then move into a discussion of the waivers. Uh, members of the board.
Y- yes, Mr. Chair, I can, I can start, um. So, uh, this process, the applicant was, was much more favorable in, in dealing with us. I think the most disappointing part for me at the end was, um, they had made some progress in density and size, uh, even though, uh, yet at the end, they weren't willing to get feedback from town officials, meaning the engineering department or TAC. So we can only, I can only judge based on what TAC had prom- said previously, which is that the project is unsafe. And again, we're on Nahand Street, which is a very busy, curvy road. Uh, this project is very close to the intersection of Main and Nahand, uh, to the point where there were great concerns about traffic. Actually backing up beyond this project and adding the amount of cars from this project into that whole stream was very concerning to TAC. And although the development team made some movement, um, maybe not enough, uh, but we never heard finally back from TAC on their latest, uh, provisions and documentation, so we can only go, I can only go by what TAC previously said, which this project is unsafe, and because of inability for fire trucks, safety apparatus, to get onto the property, get off of Nahand Street, uh, and to properly and, and act in a, and support it, uh, from a safety standpoint was unfeasible. Um, so, uh, I'm, I'm, although the applicant did make some progress and our working groups did work, uh, to a certain extent, um, we still needed to get a final resolution, uh, from TAC and from our, uh, specific uh, peer consultants, uh, and we were unable to do that, so I can only go and act that the project is unsafe. Uh, and uh, we can then go through the waivers based on that idea. That's my, those are my thoughts.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll second a lot of Chip's comments, and again, it's just interesting that the, both of these projects, the previous one and this one kind of ran at the same time, they were applied for around the same time. They ran about the same time, c- c- closed at the same time. And now, although, again, they made some concessions and, and the project was potentially moving in a, in a way that would make it feasible and viable, um, they opted to not continue it further. Um, I found it disappointing in the end that they weren't willing to go farther, because it seemed like it was headed in a direction that might have got to something that, uh, this board could have approved. Uh, but again, without going that the extra distance to maybe see it through and get the additional feedback from our peer reviews, we won't know. We won't know, and also all we have to go on, as Chip said, was the previous feedback. And that it wasn't safe, and there were still concerns. Right? That's all we have to go on, um. So, uh, again, just disappointed it, it didn't perhaps go farther, um, but we are where we are, and that was their choice, and so here we are.
Yep, thank you, Dave. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak up, so I'm, uh, I'm a little torn on this one, um. They did reduce the units. They swapped the driveway. Um, I don't know, I, I think they may try to appeal our decision, and it may get overturned. And the town may eat crow, and they may get up to their thirty units. Um, they may do an individual, uh, traffic study, and it may come back that it was safe, I don't know. And then they'll go back to the state and you know Massachusetts, they don't, they want more housing, and they may just approve this one. So I'm a little torn that I may vote for this because the units they went down to, it's a hell of a lot less than it was across the street. And I think they're gonna fight this, so I'm a little torn, to be honest with you. That's it.
Joe, I would just, I would just add that, that's fine. You're certainly entitled to your opinion and to vote the way you feel comfortable voting, but you're conjecturing about what may or may not happen in the future. What we have to vote on is what's been presented to us. And the evidence we have, so, I would just, I would recommend that you and others just consider to vote based on the evidence and the peer reviews and the information, and the testimony and the plans and the cust- and the resident feedback, and everything that was during the public hearing. What may or may not happen in the future is really not
Yeah.
relevant for what, how we vote necessarily. I would just caution you or anyone else on that, in my opinion, so.
No, I get it, I get it, um.
Yep.
Just to be clear, they need super majority, right? On this, on all waivers?
Yep. So Mickey, and you, anybody else want to add?
Um, uh, they, they did make significant, um, changes. I, I've, I always find the, um, they, they went to this boat early was the financial feasibility, which is an aspect of forty B, it is. But I think that aspect should go back to when whoever signed the, the, the purchase and sale. And maybe things get more feasible when you think of them more realistically. You thought you were gonna build forty units there, you're gonna pay this for the piece of land. That goes in your pro forma. And when it's twenty, or fifteen, or fourteen, or ten, which it should be, um, maybe, maybe, um, your, your financial feasibility is, is your own fault. When you think about realities and, and a lot of these developers, I wish they would think about where, and I won't talk about a lot of them, let's talk about this one. Um, think about where a project is. Um, the last letter I saw from TAC says it's unsafe. Just drive around there and, and get a feel for what you're trying to build and where it's going to be, what people think about it, and whether or not it's gonna be a safe, productive add to the town and not a, um, subtraction to the, the safety, to the beauty of the town, does it fit in? What should I really put there? I understand people come in and say, oh, we, like Joe said earlier, we'll save fifty units, we'll get down to twenty, and everybody's gonna say, great. Still doesn't work. Um, I could go on, but basically, the last letter I saw, I don't, I don't understand how a developer can, can know that the last thing we saw says it's unsafe and then expect us to vote for it. I guess that's it.
Anybody else? Okay. I agree with, you know, my sentiments right where Mickey is. I'm, I'm not prepared to support a project where our public safety experts, the police and fire have, have said that this is an unsafe condition, if this was built in this way. Um, and so there- And so therefore, for me, it overrides the need for housing. Similar to the last case. I, I, I agree. I was surprised to see them pull the plug on this. But we are where we are. So if no one else has anything to say, let's get to the waivers.
Chip, do you want to do these again or do you want me to take this one?
Up to you, Dave. I'm tired of reading it.
Well, these are shorter, but I'm happy to give you a break, sip of water. Alright, so the first waiver, Tom, you want to bring them up?
Yeah, I'm trying to bring them up. I'm not sure why they're not right in front of me. I have them open. Hold on. Try again. Okay. Here we go. Sorry about that. There you go. Here we go.
Alright, so the first one, section one ninety, twenty-three, table one, table of use regulations. Make a motion regarding the waiver. Seeking zoning relief to allow the proposed multifamily development, including accessory uses in the general residence zoning district. As multifamily dwellings are prohibited in the general residence zoning district.
Motion made, seconded. So discussion.
I think this stems right from the size of the unit. And the safety concerns that TAC has had. And, and that, that, those safety concerns do not overweight the need for housing.
Agreed. There's a reason multifamily dwellings are prohibited in, in the GR. Zone and. Part of which driving the safety issues is not only the road and the surrounding conditions, but the density of the project. So I agree. Anybody else? Okay. Hearing seeing no further discussion, regular voting members. Dave?
Yes. Or Joe? No, no, I'm sorry, no. No on the waiver, sorry. Had to get back to the note, the other side of the votes. Yep.
Yeah. Alright, Joe?
No.
Chip?
No.
Mickey?
No.
I vote no too. Waiver is denied. Next up.
Section one ninety thirty-four, table of dimensional regulations. Again, just a general reference to the entire section. Table of dimensional regulation provides dimensional standards, including setbacks and lot coverage. So I move that we consider the waiver from all the dimensional requirements necessary to allow the development generally as shown on the plans.
Seconded.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion, discussion on the motion.
Again, this comes down to the size of the project. In the dimensional standards and that the, the, you know, the, the fire chief is still very concerned about how to fight. Safely from the, the project, or would it have to set up on the haunt street? The haunt street has been talked about as being a very busy, especially since this is at the inner, almost at the intersection of Nahon and Main. So again, it provides a, if we were to allow the waiver, it would provide a very unsafe situation.
Agreed. Any other discussion? Hearing seen none, regular voting members, Dave?
No.
Joe?
No.
Chip?
No.
Mickey?
No.
I vote no as well. That waiver is denied.
Next, one ninety, ninety, one ninety-three dash thirty-one E. I think that's supposed to be one ninety, that's thirty-one E exemption.
I think it's a typo. Yeah.
Regulations. The bylaw provides a maximum of three, three stories. Prose project, as it was originally proposed, was four stories. So I move that we consider a waiver from the height and story requirements to allow the project as shown on the plans.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
This specifically goes to fitting into the neighborhood in a four-story building. Is, as we saw in some of the, the things that were proposed and shown to us during the hearings. Just is inappropriate for this part of the neighborhood and on the haunt street. It would not fit in or be part of the neighborhood at all.
They, they, they did make an adjustment to the height here. So. I think this one's a little bit innocuous, but I think, given that we're, we've denied the first two waivers, I'll, I'll just say that this needs to be denied. So that the project has been deemed unsafe by our public safety officials can't move forward.
I agree with you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I agree with you there, Mr. Chair. Yeah.
Yeah, and they were unwilling to. Go back and, and, you know, make all, you know, this should have all been updated and. Time should have been given to update all of this. So we have to go with, with what we've got in front of us, I guess.
Yeah. Agree. Alright, motion's been made and seconded. Unless there's any further discussion, we're gonna go back to regular voting members. Dave?
No.
Joe?
No.
Yep.
No.
Mickey?
No.
I vote no as well. Waivers denied. Next.
Section one ninety thirty-one F, traffic visibility at driveways and corners. I make a motion to consider the waiver from these requirements to the extent necessary to permit the project as shown on the plan.
Seconded.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion?
This specifically goes to the safety of the project, which TAC outlined as being inappropriate. For, for sightlines and all of that. So to allow this waiver would be going right against. TAC's recommendations for the safety of the neighborhood and the concerns of the, of the town of Wakefield.
Yeah, totally agree. Any other comments?
Nope, agreed.
Hearing seeing none, voting members, Dave?
Sorry, point of order, Mr. Chair. Was somebody else gonna speak up there?
I was just gonna say, maybe it's the title that just says traffic visibility and driveway and corners. And to request a specific waiver for that. It, it might be just the, the title of that particular, but wow. It doesn't, it doesn't age well considering our last TAC letter. That's all. Sorry.
Okay. Regular voting members, Dave?
Yeah, no, no.
Joe?
No.
Chip?
No.
Mickey?
No.
I vote no as well. Waivers denied.
Section one ninety thirty-one G, screening and buffer strips. Move that we consider a waiver from these requirements to the extent necessary to permit the project as shown on the plans.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
Again, this is just going to the point of if we waive this, it doesn't fit into the neighborhood. It doesn't give screening. It doesn't do all the things that, that a normal application would do. So I'm not in favor of wavering, waiving these requirements.
Agreed. Any other discussion? Hearing seeing none, regular voting members, Dave?
No.
Joe?
No.
Chip?
No.
Mickey?
No.
I vote no as well. Waivers denied. Next.
Section one ninety thirty-two, multifamily dwellings, mixed use development. This section provides the approval criteria for multifamily dwellings. I move that we consider a waiver from this section as the zoning board of appeals is provided with the authority to issue all local approvals.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion, please?
If we approved this waiver, we would be approving the project and thus. Approving to go against traffic advisory and potentially engineering as we haven't heard their final, final thoughts. So I can't be in favor of this waiver.
Once again, these multifamilies are prohibited in the general residence for a reason and the density of the project is partly what's driving the safety issue. So I agree, Chip. Any other discussion? Hearing seeing none, regular voting members, Dave?
No.
Joe?
No.
Chip?
No.
Mickey?
No.
I vote no as well. Waivers denied. Next up here, articles. Article two.
I'm sorry. Sorry, forgot to turn the page.
It's on the screen if you want to look up.
Oh, yeah, I know. I got my own copy, but with my notes on it, so. Article two, stormwater management and land disturbance. I make a motion. To consider the waiver from these requirements and further that the project will comply with the state and federal regulations.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
So this, this one is frustrating to me because if we had had them here, we could ask this question. I want to know why you need a waiver if you're going to comply. So I'm not in favor of giving them a waiver. Because that would just open the door for them not to comply.
Yeah, I think this was belt and suspenders on their behalf. This is a little innocuous, but given that we've denied all the other waivers, I think we should do this one too.
Similar, like we saw with the previous one and to Chip's point, it's like. You're gonna meet it, so why ask for a waiver for it? So wouldn't be in favor of approving it.
Alright, regular voting members, Dave?
No.
Joe?
No.
Chip?
No.
Mickey?
No.
I vote no as well. Waivers denied. Last one, guys.
Chapter one oh eight, Wakefield earth removal bylaw. I move that we consider a waiver. To the extent applicable from chapter eight of the Wakefield bylaw. As the zoning board of appeals is provided with the authority to issue all local approvals.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Again, since we have not heard from engineering on the final set of plans. I'm not sure how much this is needed or not needed. So I can't be in favor of granting the waiver because we have not heard from our peer consultants and experts.
Similarly, seems a little innocuous and. What exactly they're waving or requesting a waiver for, but again. Seems a little vague in, in my mind, but. For the reasons previously stated, I can't support waiving it.
Agreed. Hearing seeing no further discussion, regular voting members, Dave?
No.
Joe?
No.
Chip?
No.
Mickey?
No.
I vote no as well. That waiver is also denied. By my list, that's the end of their waiver requests. Now to the, the comprehensive permit application itself.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to deny the comprehensive permit sought by the applicant. And the aforementioned waivers from the local bylaws. Based on the determination that the proposal doesn't comply with matters of health, safety, environment, design, open space, or other matters of local concern. Which outweigh the housing need in the town of Wakefield.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
I think it's all, I think it's all been said.
Yep, gonna read this in though. We look at the evidence presented to the board, which includes submissions from the applicant's development team. Tom subject matter experts, including the leaders of the Wakefield Police and Fire Departments, as well as testimony from neighbors and citizens. We took all that evidence into consideration and the board looked thoughtfully and carefully at each waiver. And the reasons to deny are overwhelming. First and foremost, the proposed development was deemed unsafe related to traffic. I'll read some of the TAC memo into the public record. Nahon Street has been and continues to be a regular source of traffic complaints, including speeding, cut through traffic, poor visibility. Pedestrian volumes and illegal truck traffic and violation of posted restrictions. The following conditions that have been discussed in detail in this document. Could be exacerbated by the addition of twenty-four residences, which would impact the overall safety in this area. Illegal parking, delivery vehicles, vehicle speeds, particularly in off-peak hours. Vehicle queues from the intersection of Nahon and Main Street and North Avenue. Fire truck access and maneuvering around the site and frequent medical calls blocking Nahon Street. These conditions exist along Nahon Street today and have been raised as concerns by the TAC and the neighbors in the area. Any condition that results in additional blockage of Nahon Street is particularly concerning. The TAC feels that cumulatively, cumulatively, these conditions will likely result in a negative impact on safety in the air. And for those reasons, I can't support the permit as well. Any further discussion? Regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. That permit is denied. Okay, moving on, we're on to other matters. Review and discuss graph requalification of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. In preparation for a joint meeting with the bylaw review committee that will take place on January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I got a bunch of notes, folks. I don't know what. Others did or if you had a chance to. Prep. You know, it's, it's obviously a large document. If you looked at it's over a hundred pages. So I, I've just, some of it. We don't need to look at. I have some. I can pull it up. We can just discuss if you've looked at and have general concerns. Pleasure of the board on this one.
No, Mr. Chair, I, I have not made it through all a hundred and forty-something pages. I've, I've, I've glanced over it. I, I, you know, a few things have sort of popped out to me, but they're probably of. More of a minor nature than my mind and. I, I think. Some of the larger things that I think have come up in previous discussions with Joe and, and, you know, at different meetings we've had. So. I would defer to Joe, who's been pretty involved in this right along. And others that have been able to make it through the entire thing and compare it to our current bylaw and really. Identify the things that would be most concerned. I'll, I'll, I'll certainly try, try to make it more through the entire document before Monday's meeting. But. Again, I'm gonna defer to Joe and others that perhaps have been a little closer to this.
Yeah, I, I've got, I've got, I have got through it and. Joe, I'm sorry, did I cut you off? I was looking.
No, I mean, I was just gonna say that we've been working on this for. Two years or a year and a half anyway. So for us to get through with it tonight, I mean, we decided, we went through. The, the bylaw review committee went through it with town council. Uh, no, plant, town council, who was it? Plan board, plan board. Couple weeks ago and we still didn't get through the first twenty-five percent of it. So, and that was a four-hour meeting two weeks ago. So. The chances of us getting through it tonight. Before Monday's. Next meeting is gonna take some time, but I mean, a lot, the big part of it is the renumbering. We took a couple of sections, cross them right out. Bobowski added some, you know, some different wording, brought some, some things up to date to today's standards. And then we added that whole other section, performance standards that. And then we added that whole other section, performance standards that that I thought was a good idea, but you know, hearing comments from this board, you thought it was kind of limiting. So I don't know. I don't know if you want to take it from the top or you want to skip to a certain sections and Tom, if you want to.
What I did is it does. If you go through it, it is tedious. And there's two types of things that need to be addressed. There's all kinds of just kind of mistakes and other things that just need to be corrected. And then there's four areas that jumped out at me and some of them bigger than others. As it relates to nonconformity, you know, they're looking to codify it and really take that power away, you know, from Ben making a the building inspector making a a decision on this. So it's standards for the building inspector, which I wasn't, didn't strike me as good. The big one though is these performance standards. Which for me, the 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 code, this thing should be the enabling legislation. And if we wanted to, as a board, put some performance standards in place, we should do that as a board. It shouldn't be codified. It should be a practice, not a codify. And it does occur to me with these forty B applications that come in, we have so much so little wiggle room right now. If they come in and meet these performance standards, it's even going to take any other discretion that we have away from us or any other power to push back on them away. So I've got, I've also dealt with performance standards in Cambridge, Boston, and Somerville. When they tried to do that, they don't work. They backfire and for both sides. So also, there was a section in the changing the criteria for what we look at with special permits. And they've added things like some language that is concerning to me, like we'd be looking at social structures and other kind of social engineering language that they're putting into zoning that doesn't seem like zoning zoning, right? We're not doing social engineering here. So I think we should look at that. And then there's another section to change for it needs to be shown on a site plan. So those were the four things that jumped out at me. I could maybe what I could do if if folks, and I understand we had a lot to get ready for tonight. If folks aren't prepared to have like a big discussion on it, I'd be happy to take this and just type up those areas that and bring them into the meeting on
Monday.
thirteenth, that obviously try to share them. I'll try to do it by Friday and share it with you guys. And then if you have additions or subtractions, or if you don't want me to include one as from the board as opposed, I can do it as an individual as opposed to a member of this board. So we could do a lot of different things that, you know. But it sounds like folks aren't ready to have a long discussion on this tonight, if I'm reading the room right.
Well, I think we're all exhausted from from tonight and in all honesty, I haven't had a chance to spend much time at all at all other than conversations that have happened. I'm very comfortable in with you and the expertise that you have and have seen from Somerville, Cambridge, and Boston, leading the charge as our chair. And that if you are have the time and can put something together, I'd love to take a look at it, but I have no problem with you speak, you know, this isn't going to be a one and done meeting. So I have no problem with you speaking as the chair of the board because I trust you totally. And
So Joe. So Joe, that speaks of it. Are they really trying to get this into Springtown meeting? Because this seems like a huge thing. What what would the rush be to get it into Springtown meeting?
I I don't know. I think that's the feeling of Dan Lieber. I think they're trying to do that. I think they're trying to do that. I may be speaking a context here, but I think they're trying, just in case it doesn't pass, it gives us time to bring it to the the next which is in the fall, November, whatever.
It was my fault. I know that the Fall Town Meeting, so why wouldn't we get it right? I mean, it's it's our zoning.
No, exactly.
That deals with it all the time. I, you know, the extra six months makes sense to me.
No, and I yeah, I think, well, we lost November and December, so now we're down to crunch time. And I think we only have a certain amount of time we can meet before it's got to go to print basically and then get on the warrant. So we're back against the timeframe here. So yeah, I mean, we could talk about it on Monday. And I mean, I've, like I said, we've been dealing with this for a year and a half now. So if it gets pushed to November to get it right, I think that's the the right course of action to do.
procedurally, this this has to be fully vetted through the planning board in a public hearing, right? To then be put on the warrant.
Yes, and that's and that's that was that was our last meeting December, whatever it was, the third or the twelfth or whatever that was. And we didn't even get, I think we got through like thirty percent of it.
So there's more to do, right? You know, the planning board's not done.
Exactly. So there was a couple of things that, I mean, they were, we were flying at one point and then we got hung up on a couple of things and it was, you know, they were complaining because it was getting late. It was like nine thirty. And I said, hey, it's still early. We we go to midnight sometimes. Come on, let's go. So.
All right. So that has to do, but you made me think of a couple of other things again. And and I'll try to get through the sections, but I'd be I'd be looking for anything that, you know, if takes the powers away from the zoning board and gives them to somewhere else, or it strips powers away that we no longer have jurisdiction over, right? That things are going to be by by right instead of by permit or something, right? So I'd be keying on anything that like the town is giving up their rights, right, to developers, to whoever, right? And then I'd be looking at what do we do, right? We do, we make findings. Are the are the new requirements for findings? I did get to that section. It happened to be towards the front of the document. It sounded similar, reworded, but like, are we basically still have the capability to make similar kinds of findings with the belt and suspenders of not more nonconforming and substantially more detrimental? So, yeah, we do findings. And if the language is just rewritten, but clarified in some way, okay. Special permits, again, there's criteria for special permits. Are they similar? Are they adding things like you said, Tom, that might be questionable? Hopefully, they don't make it easier to grant special permits because I think those criteria are there for a reason. And then variances, right? Variances are perhaps the more stringent and, you know, have to prove some hardship. So I'd want to make sure that the new bylaws. You know, clarifying language is one thing, but but, you know, taking jurisdiction away from the town to to grant these things I'd be concerned about, and I'd want to understand the rationale for. So those are the things I would key on. Some of it's administrative and, you know, all the other stuff's got definitions and table of uses. Like I noticed that they were giving special permits. It had codes for like special permit by zoning board, planning board, and town council. And I was like, now the town council's giving special permits. But then I looked at the table of use. There actually was nothing that said town council. So I don't know if that's just a placeholder potentially for future use, but I'm like, what are they giving the town council permits for now? So.
That's one of the mistakes I saw too. That's why I said that some themes that we want to address.
Yep.
And there's some things that, like, they reference, like, a a zoning district that we don't have in our code.
Oh, the M R's? Yeah, yeah, I noticed that.
We got M R two.
That was from like Autobahn Road fifty years ago or something. Yeah, I don't think it applies anymore. Yeah, yeah.
But but on the opposite side, Dave, just I I I get nervous about them trying to codify discretionary decisions that we need to make as opposed to pulling decision away from us, just making it the law of, you know, so skip over us. We don't have any just, you know, these performance standards, you know. That's why I don't like them. It takes away all discretion, doesn't recognize that each neighborhood has its own context. It doesn't recognize, it takes the voice of the neighbors away that we couldn't like listen to because they've met the performance standard. It's it, they're bad. They're just bad.
So Tom, they're they're at the very end of that, six, three, eleven. I mean, it does have, after all that, it's put into the performance standing, it does create a paragraph that says that, you know, we may waive any of these performance standards. You know, whereas not in public.
They shouldn't be in the code.
So.
Yeah, because if you have to waive them, then you have to look at a developer come in and say, these are the, these are the thoughts you have. I meet them all. Why do you even have them if I meet them? And then you're just gonna tell me I can't do it. So I gotta just not have them.
No, I I mean, me as a, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm a developer, but as a contractor, again, if I had a list of performance standings, I could probably better, you know, better prepare myself to come to the board with, you know, instead of wasting the boards. And that's how I'm looking at the performance standards. If I'm coming to get a booklet together to come to you guys, I'm gonna see what you want, and I'm not gonna waste six months of your time going through the rigmarole that we have, that we usually put these guys through and say, no, don't do that, add this. At least I, as a contract coming in or or developer, at least I have something, a roadmap to go to. So that's how I look at it.
But, Joe, couldn't you get that same roadmap by looking at our previous decisions? If you're really a smart developer, let me go look at something really close to what I'm doing and, oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, you're correct. You're correct.
It, we're not, it's all there. If somebody was really, you know, think about your project on, you know, North Ave, you know, it's North Ave. Oh, geez. It's not Nahat Street. Okay, that makes sense. You know, I just, the the whole standards provision scare me. Because I feel like it can be held over us.
Yeah, I I agree. Like I said, with forty Bs, if they click all these things too, it goes both ways because then you might have a horrible site that you want to see developed, but they can't meet the performance standards. So then you're opening up for appeals. Yeah, yeah, we can. The board could, like you said, there's a section there, but then the neighbor could just soon stop it all because they didn't meet the performance standards.
I get, you know, I mean, I get it. I get it. You know.
I just they don't work. I I just, I I'll articulate it better when I write it down, but I've just, I've lived through it. School of hard knocks, Joe.
I guess so.
All right. Are people okay with that? I'll write something up. I'll get it out to people. And even though I submit it, Joe, if you disagree, I don't want to you say whatever you want when we go to the meeting on Monday. I'm just gonna raise the issue.
No, I I think you should because I'm just one person from the board. You've been here. Like I said, you've you've, everyone on the board, all the voting members anyways trump me in the timeframe that you've been here. So yes, I've been on the, you know, the bylaw review committee for the last couple of years, but the fact that I, you know, I want you guys there because then you, you know, you have your own opinion. I'm just one guy on the board that, you know, has my opinion. So I think it's, I think this meeting should have, and we tried, like I said earlier, we tried to make this meeting with all of us way back in the past, just, you know, timeframes, you know, everyone's schedule's tough. So but that's one of the reasons that we should have met in the past, and that's why we should meet to Monday to get everybody.
You say that. Did we try to get this meeting put together months ago? They were out like, why, why are we coming into the game so late?
Well, some of it's us though, Chip, because Dan did reach out, but I was like, at the time, if you remember, we were coming out of the ring on September fifth, we were getting ready to take votes on these forty Bs. And
Why didn't we come out a year ago?
Um, yeah, I mean, we
I mean, we're the zoning board and they're doing zoning recodification. And we're coming in as the last group they meet with. It doesn't make, none of it makes a lot of sense to me.
I think they were trying to get the whole the whole package together and then meet with planning board, which we did a few weeks ago, and then now that, you know, with us. So.
I I in some ways, Chip, it's easier for us to react to something than sit there and kind of spitball something. So I don't mind the way it's happening as long as we get our input, right?
And what, Joe, what's happening with signs as a
How much time you got?
Well, no, I know. Are you, are you guys rewriting the whole zoning signs? I mean, so there was a, there was a group that I, Jim McBane, myself, way back when, put together a whole new sign bylaw back when Dinaco was around. And it just died on the tree.
But even the current bylaw has two zoning, the old zoning and the new one, right?
Yeah, we're trying to buy and then make it one and
I think they want to put it, they want to throw it right. They want to throw it on Benny's lap is what I think they want to do, which I don't.
I don't agree with it.
I don't agree with that because if we're gonna, if we're gonna ever do this, the signs got to be, the sign stuff got to be addressed in this.
And it's got to be a townwide, no overlay district. It really needs to be townwide. I don't know why it was ever an overlay. Because
Industrial signs and stuff can be different than a downtown sign.
Well, fine, then you put them in.
Melrose has, if you look at Melrose as a good example of nice signage, you know, they have two different districts. I mean, there's
Well, I know, but we had like the old, we had two different bylaws with two different standards.
Oh, no, that our sign, right now, our zoning bylaw and signs is the absolute disaster.
Right. So combine them into something or have two sections for these residential zones, business zones, industrial, whatever, right? But cover the whole town. Don't have an overlay district. It would be my thought, but that's just another consideration. I don't know that it's become up, Joe, but it's got to cover the whole town in some way, right? Because there's signs all over the place. There's little businesses all over the place.
Yep.
Don't only have it in Greenwood and Main Street, Albion and parts of Greenwood, like anyway.
I I think that our last meeting got hung up on that, if I if I remember correctly, I can't, it was about a month and a half ago with you know.
I can see your hand up. Feel free to pop on.
I just, can you hear me?
Wow, wow. Must be nice to have nothing to do but watch our meetings all night.
You know, you're entertaining. So I I just want to, you know, I've I've attended every bylaw, almost every bylaw review committee, and Joe's right, at the last meeting, this sign issue was a little bit of a contentious issue. Because, you know, I raised the point that I don't think this bylaw should be completed, the recodification, until we knows the town, what we're gonna do with the sign bylaw. To just recodify it and stuff it in there the way it is now, and we don't even have a design review board anymore. It's in essence been disbanded and is requirement of the bylaw. And at that last meeting of the bylaw review committee, Samantha Elliott, our senior planner, was there for the town. And and she took that position as well, that this this sign bylaw needs to be figured out before we go to town meeting with a recodification of the bylaw. It might take till the fall, so be it. Who cares? As you've said, let's all get this right. And it doesn't need to be rushed. And I know that the senior planner Samantha Elliott is working on revisions to that. So she she was gonna take a shot at that, but I just wanted you to know that that was discussed. And I think, and I also think you can look at the video. I know she took, she felt that way, but I think the planning board might have felt that way also. But, you know, I think to just kind of look the other way and we all say, hey, this sign bylaw, the way it is really doesn't work, but hey, we spent all this money on recodification. Let's just throw it in there the way it is and we'll figure it out later. That's not the way to do it. And the other thing too is we just passed this N B T A bylaw, which is, our bylaw is being reviewed by the Attorney General. So it hasn't gone into effect yet. So I think the recodification, whenever it gets approved by town meeting, should incorporate that. So we're not, you know, recodifying a bylaw and then, you know, three months later, making amendments and modifications to it again, just because we didn't finish it. So that was just my input.
You know, that's good. Yeah, I don't know what the solution on the sign thing is, but I agree. It's a mess. I hate when these people show up at our board because they don't know. And it's hard to, it's hard to make our way through some of this stuff. So.
Well, I also, I again, you know, that's interesting that the senior planner is taking a shot at it. That's great. But did we even know that? As the people that deal with it every day, does, other than I mean, why wouldn't she talk to somebody?
I think her plan is to do that, Chip. When I say
Why wouldn't you do that? Well, you wouldn't know. You're not her. Well, why wouldn't you do that? Well, you wouldn't know. You're not her. But shouldn't that be the first step?
Well, I think to come up with a draft, right now, you know, that by law doesn't work, you know, i- i-.
I agree, but.
I think Gail will tell you.
We came close to having a good by law.
Gail will tell you, it's created a real problem in the building department because people want signs downtown and and the step under the by law requires them to go to the design review board before they go to you. And there is no design review board. So 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 that's why I think whatever the solution's gonna be. As a town, we should figure that out now before we go to town meeting to amend the by law. It does, it makes absolutely no sense not to not to to just look the other way on that. And say, oh, okay, well, we'll deal with that later. No, it's gonna be dealt with now.
Yeah, but what about that that whole by law that Falvey, myself, McGrail, you you and Jim worked on?
I didn't work on it. You guys had.
No, you I didn't. We talked to you about it, though.
You know, that goes back years ago, and and nothing ever came of that. It was never finished.
Well, I think it was pretty close to finish.
Might have been. I'm not really privy to that. I mean.
Yeah, I I just don't.
Well, that that maybe that could be dusted off possibly, but whatever it's gonna be.
I think that does need to get dusted off.
It needs to be looked at and maybe, you know, and it needs to be figured out and vetted, uh I think before before, my personal opinion is.
I think I can, I think I know somebody that can dust that off.
It is a citizen and a taxpayer to spend all this money on the recodification and not have that figured out. As a part of it before it goes forward, it's 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 not right.
Well, it makes no sense at all.
Well, how how come the by law, the sign review committee hasn't been. Reestablished? How come, like, once Jim left, how come they didn't look for other members? It just fell apart and that was it? And they didn't want to. Re-up anybody or re- reapply or put an application in the paper like they do with when the ZBA loses a member?
Right, Joe, there was just no interest. So, you know, it's a bill that can't be filled.
Was it ever, was it ever issued in a paper or anything or like advertised or anything, or did it just drop and just fall flat and then that was it?
I don't know.
It wasn't, there were a couple of other members, right? Bob Burnett and somebody else, right? It wasn't just Jim. There was a committee, right?
No, I know, but it seemed like it fell. Once Jim left, it was gone, right?
Right, Jim was certainly the 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 founding father and and the, yeah, I mean, we can debate what happened. We can certainly find out what happened, but.
But they could advertise and said, we'd look in to fill a seat like they do all the other boards.
That's that's what I was getting at.
I think Bob resigned. Bob Burnett resigned.
So there's officially no members anymore?
Maybe one.
Yeah, and the and the other thing that's happening is I think um that, you know, you've got this new ADU law that's gonna go into effect in February. And and they're talking about doing some modifications to the zoning by law to address that. This should all happen at once. You know, this should be done like a Kool-Aid stand at the end of the day that. We just whip it all up and then say, oh, we did this, but now it's not right. Now we have to amend it at the next town meeting. You know, I know, y- you gotta be really careful with this stuff. I remember when Winfield did their recodification. They left some stuff out that became critical. As an example, they forgot to put height limits in the by law. It was a real problem because people say, now I can build a single family house. Well, and they had a rush to a town meeting to fix it. So, you know. I mean, I read it again today in preparation for this meeting. I found a bunch of typos. Nobody's fault, but the more you read it, you gotta spend time on this stuff. You can't rush it. And that if you do, that's when mistakes inadvertently happen. Everybody's, you know, everybody's worked so hard on this. The by law review committee's done a great job. They've worked really hard on this, but. I just think it real, everybody just needs to take a step back and and take their time and make sure everything's incorporated into it. And it's done right and thoroughly.
Well, good points, Brian. Thanks for that.
All right. We're not gonna solve it all here tonight, it sounds like. I'll uh. I'll write it up and and Joe, Joe's the only one nervous about this delay because he's thinking, I thought it was on the one year committee and now.
Now I've been, now I've been two years.
Three, I'd spend three. It'll be three just July.
Oh, really?
I think uh I want to say it, yeah, maybe two.
Well, I'm gonna give you a gold star on your forehead when this is all.
Yeah, well, that and twenty five cents might get me a ride on the bus.
I know, we'll have a shuttle by the time this is done.
Yeah.
We hope. How about those?
Let's. Yeah, let's let's move on from other matters now. We got a clerk in board comments. I have one comment. When when are we doing our holiday get together?
Monday?
Oh.
All right, I'll I'll circulate something, but.
I I I would ask that it all start with Gail because she's gonna, she's gonna try to get out of this again.
No, I won't.
This will be her last one.
It will be my last one. Yep. Yep.
I'll get some dates from Gail and then I'll circulate.
I I'm good for usually a Wednesday that's not a board meeting.
Okay.
Because Thursdays and Thursdays tend to be permanent building committee, so.
Yeah, I get, I get regulatory boards that usually meet Tuesday and Thursday in my day job. So, yeah, Wednesdays tend to be better.
You have a day job?
Yeah.
So some days, some days not.
Reading Wakefield's zoning bylaws and prepping for forty B hearings.
Yeah.
All right. Then we have uh if there's no other comments, do we do have some expertly prepared minutes from December eleventh, twenty twenty four? Any corrections or concerns?
Mister Chair, I stepped down after the first couple of hearings, so I probably would defer to others to make motions and such.
This can be a voice, folk.
And I move that, I move that we accept the uh minutes as written.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, it's always in order. Thanks, guys. Thanks for your patience. I know that was tedious going through those.
Not bad. Nine o'clock, not bad.
Yeah, we tripped at the beginning, but then once we got going, it worked out.
Get used to it all.
Yeah. All right, guys. All right.